Evan, are you on?
We're here, Mayor.
You're all here, okay. I T Department, we're ready to begin when you're ready to begin.
Anytime you're ready.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. It is Monday, February 7th, 2022. This is a virtual special meeting of the Commissioners of City Rehoboth Beach. I like to call this meeting to order at 12:09 PM again on Monday, February 7th. Getting an echo from somebody, possibly the Commissioners' room. I'd like to do a roll call this time and identify those participating with a little wave if you will. Commissioner Susan Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Tony Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Tim Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Jay Legree.
Here.
Commissioner Ed Stranowski.
Here.
Commissioner Gossett. Yeah, to step away for a minute. I think he'll be back shortly. And Mayor Stan Mills this year, we have six out of seven. We have a quorum and are formally able to conduct business. As usual, I'd like to thank all those that are watching. I'd like to identify those that are pre-registered to speak, and that includes John Bonano and also Walter Burningham. I will call on you at the appropriate times during the meeting so we can get your input on the two topics in front of us today. Speaking of the two topics, the purpose of this special meeting today is to discuss and possible consideration or vote, in other words, on two parking issues. One is parking season start and stop times being amended to earlier and later than the current parking season, by example, from May 1st to September 30th annually. And the second topic for discussion and vote, parking fee amounts for metered parking spaces being amended from two rates at $3 an hour and $2 an hour to a single rate of $3 an hour citywide. You can see the support documents that were ready ahead of the agenda are embedded in the agenda. And then our last topic after we resolve the two voting issues is to identify other parking topics for future review. I will say that we got some correspondence recently about the parking time limits for permit parking in front of private property, and that is a future topic that is not on today's agenda. We have talked about it in the past, and we decided not to act on it for this year, and it will be on the agenda for later. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sharon or Evan Miller to lead the discussion on the start and stop dates, and we'll address that one first.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a continuation of our previous meeting. Again, the purpose of the special meeting today is to discuss and possibly consider two issues. One is extending the existing parking season from the Friday before Memorial Day through the second Sunday after Labor Day to May 1st to September 30th annually, which was, appeared to be some consensus reached at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Evan. And before we go any further, I'd like to acknowledge some correspondence by the Rehoboth Beach Homeowners Association that we received, and it's got many, many comments on it. It's got a survey. As far as the comments go, whatever your position is, you will be able to find support in the comment section. So very appreciative of the Rehoboth Beach Homeowners Association conducting that survey and then passing it along to us. With that, I'd like to open discussion to the Commissioners. Again, we're talking solely about the parking season. That is when meters have to be started to be fed and also permits have to be implemented. Any discussion? Commissioner Sharp, go ahead.
I just need to have my memory refreshed, if I could ask. I think in our last meeting, I honestly can't remember what we talked about is, are the fundamental reasons of why we want to make the change on the season? And what I'm trying to get at is if it is to raise revenue or if it is simplicity?
My recollection, Commissioner, is likely both of those. One is simplicity was rather than stating the start of the season as the Friday before Memorial Day, coming up with a specific date. And as far as ending the parking meter season, rather than saying the second Sunday after Labor Day, putting a definitive date in there. So, you know, the day of the week may change every year, but at least you would have a definitive date. And that practice actually reflects somewhat boardwalk rules and rules for no right turns are on red in the commercial area, that there are specific dates rather than generic references to dates. And these, I think, help everybody try to remember what the specifics are, especially those in enforcement and the public also. So I think it's benefit there. I think frankly, my recollection is that we were rather anemic on discussing doing this to raise extra revenues. You know, for me, we oftentimes have said during our budget meetings, we go through it and we find a deficiency, and then we look at how to resolve that deficiency. And usually, one point or another, we turn to the parking revenue items. And so we're kind of seemingly doing this backwards this year. And I will interject that when we get to talking about other parking topics for future review, I fully intend to initiate parking issues and discussions, maybe even before summer's over with, so that we don't get in this bind again, that we've got adequate time to look at the multitude of parking issues we might want to look at, so we've got time to talk about them more holistically, to see what to do, rather than one at a time piecemeal today. So stay tuned with that in the future. So, you know, in terms of, in terms of the needed revenues, generically, I think it's safe to say with our, we've got some lofty goals there, at least I do, for realizing a streetscape project in the future, realizing the proposal to renovate and add another story to the Beach Patrol Building to enhance safety, enhance the public restrooms at Baltimore Avenue, and other projects that we've identified that we need the extra funds. And I think we're justified in raising extra revenues based on extending the season. Where I am on extending the season, I'm not sure, honestly. I wish we'd had more time. I can understand the desire to go to May 1st to September 30th. If you recall, there are conversations even with some suggesting start at April 1, or going to May 15th instead of May 1. And on the other end of it, a conversation came up that went as far as September 15th, which is actually starting an ending time that is sooner than the current this year, which is September 18th. But also, conversation with dates thrown out there included the September 30th that we're probably going to act on, and also October 31st or November 1st. So we've kind of gone on the wide gamut there. And again, the public comment from the RBHA surveys indicates any of those seem to be fine with a lot of the members that responded there. So Commissioner Sharp, go ahead.
So Mayor, I'm so glad that you answered it in that fashion because the last time that we talked about this, I have had several conversations with folks who live closer, much closer to the ocean in those residential streets. And when I said to them that I felt the primary reason for making the change was to align everything, for the reasons you stated, for simplicity, et cetera. And then I followed it up with, well, it will give us more revenue. And they pushed back and said, well, it may give us more revenue, but how much revenue? Because their position was that extending this season for all of the permanent areas as well is a real inconvenience for them as homeowners. And I mentioned to them the results of the RBHA survey, and their response was they felt quite certain that there's a goodly number of folks who responded that do not live in the ocean blocks, which are heavily utilized, especially when we get to the further ends, the beginning and the further end of the season. So, and the other pushback that you touched on is the timing. And they felt that we are really looking at this piecemeal, that May the 1st will be here before we know it, to be honest. And they thought that if you're going to look at parking and if you're going to make changes, I just wanted to share with everyone that they felt that we should do it in a more holistic fashion with so many of the other comments that we've seen in the survey. So I'm kind of with you that I'm unsure, especially about the dates of the season because of the pushback and the negativity that I personally got.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to respond on the season in a minute. But first, I, you, both you and myself mentioned the poll from the Rehoboth Beach Homeowners Association. They have, they have, oh, I don't know, a hundred, a hundred or so comments from individuals there. But they start off with a poll of the two topics in general. One is, what do you think about extending the length of the season for both parking meters and permits from May 1 to September 30? The results were a hundred, about, I'm going to approximate things here, 140 responses, with about two-thirds of those responses in favor of extending the season, and one-third disagreeing with extending the season. And I'll read you the other one later. And I find that interesting. I too, like Commissioner Sharp, especially after getting the letter from the constituent that has a house on Hickman. You know, can't forget that the first block of, first block of Virginia, Isle of Maryland, I'm talking about residential areas here, and then going south, Hickman, Newcastle, no, Hickman, I think Hickman's the farthest one south. Then you've got Brooklyn going north and so. They're residential areas, and those residents there have to pay meters to even park in front of their place. Or wherever I've lived, I've always had permits to park on the street in front of my house. And I tell you, that is the sweet deal because permits, if everybody knows, are a lot cheaper than paying for parking meters. How I've looked at some of the season also is, Sharon, I don't know if I want to put you on the spot because I didn't give you heads up on this, but I guess I feel like some of the parking season, the heaviness of paying for it should be reflective of our amenities that we provide. You know, our beach cleaning, that we have three restrooms open, seasonal officers and beach patrol. And I don't know any of those that start May 1st or end September 30th. Sharon, do you have any, anybody have any recollection of beach cleaning and when that starts and stops?
Well, Mayor, we start the season way before the season. So there's so much preparation that is involved, not only with the Streets Department, but, you know, the beach, the beach patrol captain begins his season right about now. He's interviewing, and the same with the chief for the seasonal police officers. So, I mean, as far as staffing and when that occurs and the amount of funding that's needed for the season, that's way before the season begins. My recollection is that when we brought the, we started talking about the CIP and the new meters that were required on Rehoboth Avenue, which have already been ordered, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that maybe it would be appropriate to look at the parking season. And again, it's my recollection that, I believe it was Commissioner Bennett who brought up the fact that maybe we look, take a look at that and extend the season. And that just got us into a conversation of, you know, where we are now.
Right. I think you make a good point, Sharon, especially with beach, with respect to beach cleaning, restrooms, seasonal officers in Rehoboth Beach Patrol. What we see is the tip of the iceberg in terms of the several or few months that they're all active. But take, for instance, the seasonal officers. That's liable to be eight or nine-month process there, that they're onboard from the beginning of being hired and trained until they go home. So I think that's a very important point. Just, one of our support documents was a 2022 calendar. And just to reiterate some days here, that the current start of the parking permit season, if we do nothing, is May 27th. If we went to May 15th, that would, that would add another 12 days or so to the season. And if we went to May 1st, that would add 26 days to the season. And the current end of the parking meter and permit season is September 18th. And if we went to September 30th, that would be plus an extra 12 days. And actually, somebody has thrown in there, what about September 15th, May 15th to September 15th? That would actually start, stop the end of the season three days earlier than the current season. I'd also look at, what if we only do weekends from May 1 to May 27? That adds about 10 days if we only go weekend in May. And if we went weekends only from September 18th to September 30th, that's an extra three, three days, just to give us a little perspective. Again, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the seasonality, our amenities certainly. I'm looking at how many people come here, what the potential impact is on our business community for people coming here. You know, when I was in the rental business, we seldom had rentals before Labor Day. So it's kind of an interesting conundrum there. We did have rentals go much later, to the end of October, early November. So anyhow, those are just all things on my mind. Commissioner Stranowski, please. Ed, are you there? You're muted if you're there. Commissioner Bennett, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for going through that list. And as you were going through it, I myself was going through it and added a few more things. But when you get through Wilmington, Baltimore, the upgrades to the parking system, the increase in salaries, the monitoring of the beach, the new restrooms, so forth and so on, we're talking about a dollar. If you stayed here for 10 hours, it's going to be 10 more bucks to get a free beach and boardwalk. So I don't know if the residents want us to raise taxes to pay for these, you know, 20, 30, 40 million dollars in projects we have coming? I, you know, I, when I'm reading some of the comments that people wrote about a parking garage, yep. Well, it's because past administrations ended up putting a parking garage. If we build a parking garage, it's not going to be $2 an hour. So, I mean, we're talking about a dollar here. It's the best deal in the country. You can't go anywhere and park anywhere for two or three bucks on a beach, on a beach block. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Admittedly, Commissioner, we're not on the dollar topic yet. We're on the season. Do you have anything you'd like to say about the season extended earlier and later?
Well, for me, again, I believe, and I know, you know, I didn't get a lot of support for this, but for me, the season should be April 1st through November 1st. Why we're ignoring C, which is beyond me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stranowski, are you on yet? His hand's out, but I seem to have lost him. How about Commissioner Gay?
Yeah. First of all, I was, I was glad what you said about what I view as cost sharing. My main motivation for both of these things, the extending of the season and the dollar increase, is just that, cost sharing, that people that use our city, you know, before Memorial Day and after Labor Day, and many of them, you know, locally just come in for the day, right now are not paying a penny for all the services we provide and the upkeep, you know, we provide. So I think that, you know, to ask them to contribute something toward that, and I would love to know at some point, I'd love to get some statistics on the number of visitors we have at various points because I think it's thousands of people that are coming in, you know, for the day. Obviously, the ones staying overnight are still paying a tax, but people that are coming for the day, of which there are many, are not. So I view it as a, as a, as a cost sharing. Now, having said that, I am also very aware that we are looking right now at what appears to be a balanced budget. So as you said, Mayor, in your comments, that normally we go looking for money and this is what, you know, we get to the parking discussion. But in this case, we have a balanced budget, but we're looking at the parking discussion. But what that says to me is our balanced budget may be just fine for maintaining, you know, the status quo, but it does not fund enhancements, as you mentioned. It does not fund long-term improvements. And as Commissioner Legree pointed out at the last budget meeting, if you look ahead in the CIP, there is a rude awakening coming in the next year or two with all our capital expenses. So I would like to see, I'd like to see this net soon, but I don't know if we'll have it soon. We'll certainly have it by the end of the season. I'd like to know how much additional revenue we're going to get from this. And I'd like to earmark that specifically in one of two ways. And these are accounting questions that are beyond me. So I'll leave it to somebody else to figure out the accounting. But either, if, since we're not done talking about the budget yet, to pull the projected revenue, you know, for this year into the CIP, and let's move something that might have been kicked, panned down the road to next year, and let's move it back to create a more even distribution of capital improvements when we have the revenue. Either that, or create, you know, a separate enterprise fund or something for the streetscape project or for something. We do need to tell people how we're going to use revenue. I don't think we should just generically say, oh, we're going to get more revenue. I do think we need to put it, because we have very specific needs, and I think we need to communicate that. And I would hope that people would agree that, yeah, it's a small ask to contribute to all that we offer. And I think, I think Commissioner Bennett may have just said this. My response to the people that live on, well, first of all, I'd love to see a day when residents could have, you know, we could have a system where residents would not have to pay meters. But I don't, I understand it doesn't work that way right now. I don't know if it ever will. But I'm also aware that it was just a few short years ago that in one year, we raised property taxes 50%, wastewater 60%, water 30%. And I don't want to raise anymore. And we've got a stormwater fee that we're going to be faced with as well. So I don't want the burden to fall all to the residents, and that's the only option we have if we're going to take on these enhancements and improvements and not just stagnate where we are with general maintenance. So that's why I am in favor of it. But I think we need more information, certainly as we go forward, and, and we need to communicate how we're using.
Thank you, Susan. Anybody else? Commissioner Sharp?
I have a follow-up question. If, if we were to change, let's just use for discussion, to the May 1 date, would we have seasonal officers in place? Because that would be the official start of our season, just like May the 27th would be this year. So, I mean, my expectation would be that we would be fully staffed with police. And I don't know if that's, I would think they're being offered a position that begins May 27th. Am I wrong about that?
Commissioner, let's clarify. You said, well, we have seasonal police on force. You mean in parking enforcement?
I'm talking about everything. I'm talking parking enforcement, I'm talking at seasonal officers because when we, when we ramp up for May the 27th, I think the expectation is we have everything in place, everything, to support the season beginning May 27th. So my real, the nugget of my question is, are we ready? And what does it cost us? I don't know that we know all of this. What does it cost us, and I know the city manager's going to help me with this, to be, be ready May the 1st?
Aaron?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The, as far as the seasonal police officers, yes. They're, they're here prior to Memorial Day weekend. We're in the process of calling back parking enforcement staffing, and we've been pretty successful in the past same month or so in contacting them. And many of them, as we reported, are planning to return. We also asked them if they would be willing to return earlier. And I, my recollection is that many of them said yes. If that's incorrect, that's correct. So, yeah, we've, we've been gearing up for this and asking, and we'll be prepared for, for whatever, whatever you decide. As I said before, you know, we're in high gear right now. So we're planning, and that goes along with your decisions, and we'll, we'll be able to accommodate that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just let me wrap up, and then, and I need to just stop. So, one of the fundamental things that I want to take into consideration in making this kind of decision is, and I honestly am not trying to be obstinate, I just don't think we have it, the actual costs to ramp up with different days and the projected revenue that we would get over those days.
Well, let me state my concern because it mirrors Commissioner Sharp's, and that is, you know, you know, without somewhat of a cost-benefit analysis, it's hard to determine whether this is going to be profit-making or not. And we've indicated that in part, it's for profit-making, that we can gain more revenues for our very important projects that we've identified. But when, when we have very sparse population in the middle of, early May, we still have rigid costs for parking enforcement. Is there, are we really going to offset anything there? And I think without, without data, it's hard to make that determination. Evan or Sharon, any comment, or?
No. Mayor, I don't really have any comments aside from, you know, I think we've seen that over the years, our revenues for parking far exceed some of the expenses that we incur for the existing season. So I'd be pretty confident to say that, you know, the same would be true for if we started May 1st and went through September 30th. To put hard figures to revenue and expenses is difficult only because at some point, you have to draw the line as to what constitutes an expense for that, you know, signage, for example, is, is an expense that we would incur by changing to May 1st. However, signage is an annual reoccurring expense. So just to justify or quantify some of that stuff may be difficult. But I think as evidenced through our season, I mean, we're bringing in revenue that exceeds our expenses. So I would think that would be the, the same if extending the season.
Thank you, Kevin. Commissioner Stranowski, and then, whoops, Commissioner Legree. Took his hand down. Commissioner Stranowski, please.
Thanks. And I apologize. I did have to step away for a moment to take a call. But one point I wanted to make to Commissioner Sharp's earlier questions on the topic is, one of the objectives here too was, was looking at other coastal communities and what they do and, and making sure that we're consistent with what other communities are doing. You know, and, and the, we didn't talk a whole lot about this being revenue generating, but that's certainly one of the benefits that I have in the back of my mind for it. And one of the questions I wanted to ask, and I apologize if it was already asked, if, if Evan, you've done any sort of analysis on what, what the potential income? what the potential income could be, um, with making this change?
Uh, I, I have not done a calculation. Um, probably what I would do if I were to do one would just, would be to take the revenue, the parking revenue for the season last year, and then just divide it out by the number of days that we had, uh, in the season. Um, and then use that number to multiply by the number of days we're extending the season by, uh, and then maybe apply a, a small percentage of that, only because i- in the beginning of May, we're not going to see the same, uh, crowds or the same amount of people coming into town that we would on Memorial Day weekend, or Labor Day weekend. So, um, I could put a figure to that. Uh, I just hate to estimate revenue, uh, because it's, it's a difficult task to do.
I understood, and I appreciate that. Um, I, I just want to say, I'm, I'm generally, um, supportive of this. Um, you know, Rehoboth has changed a lot over the years, and I think we can all agree, it has become more of a year-round community. Um, it's not just the two months in the summer. Um, and the folks that are coming in September and in May, they're utilizing the bathrooms, they're utilizing our beach, the trash cans. Um, they're, they're using the amenities that we, we offer, but aren't paying, uh, for it, you know, unless they're staying in a hotel or, or renting a house. Um, so I, I'm generally, um, in favor of extending the season. I am only concerned of the negative impact it could have, and I say could, because I don't know that it will, but on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night, are people not going to drive into town in the beginning of May and go to a restaurant, rather than just go on the highway? That, that is my only concern. Um, and not so much in September, but in the very beginning of May, um, those weeknights, um, that is a concern of mine.
Thank you, Ed. Um, you missed, you missed what I mentioned, uh, what the days are. If we, if we extended, uh, May 1st to September 30th, and only did weekends, uh, you know, that, that's only like 13 extra days, uh, versus, uh, versus 12, 26, uh, what's that, 30, 38 days? Uh, so that's kind of interesting. Uh, you make a good point. I think what we would have to do is invest in, uh, marketing ourselves, uh, that there's free parking after 5:00 PM, I believe, is there not in the permit area? Uh, so maybe that's the way to counter that, that, uh, uh, we, we do an advertising campaign for the early and late months, uh, there.
I don't know.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't know that our residents are going to be happy about that. In fact, I would love to push that 5 o'clock a little bit later.
Well, Ed, we'll, we'll talk about that, you know, uh, when we talk about future things. Yeah, I, I initially was more receptive to going to mid-May, and, you know, we, the, the date thrown out there was May 15th. Well, th- this year, that's a Sunday versus May 13th, which is a Friday, uh, even go to May 12th or something, that, you know, I, that's my preference, middle of May to end of September, but if somebody throws out a motion, uh, May 1st to September 30th, I may likely go for it. I think there is rationale for doing it that, uh, I think Commissioner Bennett and Susan Gay, uh, articulate. Anything else from the commissioners before I go to the public? Eric Dunleavy, let me go to the members of the public. John Bonanno, are you on? He, I don't see him on. How about Walter Brittingham?
Thank you. No, thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. All right. Thank you, Walter. That closes the public comment portion of this. With that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Carol. Don't forget.
You know what? I don't, I, I maybe don't have a complete list here, because I've only got two names on here, and, I mean, hold on a second.
Excuse me, Mayor. I sent an updated list earlier this morning.
Oh, everybody, hold one second. Pause, pause. Ann, can you bring me a printout?
Sure can.
Thank you. In the meantime, while I'm waiting for an updated list, that, uh, maybe updates us, uh, from two to more. Carol, is that you on the line?
It certainly is.
All right, identify yourself, and, uh, I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. It's, uh, Carol Everhart, Rehoboth Beach, Dewey Beach, Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, thank you for getting me in here. Um, I just want to tell you that I spoke to a number of the businesses. Uh, most called me. I did call three or four more in addition to that. And if there was any support for a change in, um, enforcement time, it was for May 15 to September 15th. That was pretty much unanimous on that. Uh, and here's some of the reasons that they gave me. One thing I hadn't thought of is these employees that normally come in on the transit, and that transit changes, um, its availability to get in and out of time, that scheduling, um, with the seasons. So if you change your season, um, that transportation is not always available to the employee. So what does that mean? And one employer said to me, it means that they bring their car in, and then they would either be probably paying the $3 an hour if it goes to that, or whatever the meter fee is. And the fear was, they're already struggling with employees, so that was, that was one definite, um, concern that I heard I had not thought of. The other concern was, if you, especially in the fall, if you go later, uh, we all know that we have a growing residential community outside of Rehoboth. They wait for the meters to come off. And everybody knows that, and it does bring a lot of business to them, so there was concern there. And also the activities, and it isn't chamber activities, these are nonprofit activities, um, all types of, um, I will call them events that happen, especially in the fall. So there was concern over that, the loss of that. So if it gets, um, extended, definitely, they were hoping that it would just be with those 11 days, if you went from May 15 to September 15. And they like simplified. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. I'm still waiting on my list. Uh, John Bonanno has not come on. We've, uh, had Walter. Uh, if anybody else has signed up, shout your name out. Otherwise, otherwise, hang tight. One more minute, and I should be able to get that list.
Mayor, the only other person that I have signed up besides Carol was Jeff Erlich.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ann. Uh, Jeff Erlich, are you on board?
He's not on the call.
And I don't see him on the call, so, uh, it's just Walter and Carol. Uh, with that, I turn it back to the commissioners for additional discussion or a motion. I want to remind, remind everybody why this is a special meeting, uh, is to specifically vote on two parking issues, because there are time constraints for realizing any amendments to the code, uh, and being able to get them in either chamber or city funk, uh, media inquiries and, and, uh, press releases. Uh, so I guess, I guess what we're looking for is a motion to extend the parking season from what it is existing, uh, to, uh, start May 1 and end September 30th, if that's what people are so inclined.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Srinaski.
Yeah, Mayor, could you just, uh, say again what, um, what days, um, you specified, um, or recommended that it would be, um, in the beginning of May?
May 1. Well, um, the, before you were here, we, we articulated that previous meetings, uh, that had gone anywhere from April 1 uh, to May 1 to May 15th, uh, and going to May 15th, that's 12 days, going to May 1 is 26 days, going to April 1, it's a, uh, approximately, what, uh, 56 days. Uh, and at the end of the season, right now, it ends September 18th. If it was pushed back to September 30th, that's an extra 12 days. Uh, other, uh, mentions by commissioners uh, in previous meetings said to go from September 18th, possibly to September 15th, September 30th, uh, or October 31st, November 1st in there. Again, going from 18 to 30 is 12 days. Uh, and, uh, i- if we did those starting earlier, starting later, but did only a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that adds about 10 days, uh, versus, uh, 38 days. Uh, Commissioner, uh, anything else, Commissioner Srinaski?
Yeah, no, I, I got all that. I, I was talking about the days of the week that you had recommended, not, not the timeframe.
Uh, well, I, I, I was, I was first considering, like, like, May 12 to September 30th, just to go to the middle of May. Uh, but again, I, I will probably acquiesce to if somebody wants it earlier, and there's a majority there, uh, to go to May 1st. Uh, again, I, again, reasons for me, I think, were very well articulated by Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Gay with the, the need to do it. Uh, in addition to what Commissioner Sharp indicated was, uh, uh, that for simplicity, uh, of remembering dates, uh, going to a definitive dates, I thought was, uh, very beneficial. Anything else, Commissioner Srinaski?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Gay?
Uh, yeah, um, yeah. Uh, first of all, I, I couldn't agree more. We have to have specific dates, whatever, whatever they are. We have to have specific dates. And I'm, I'm certainly open to the, the full range of the May 1 to September 30th, but, you know, give, and I have to also, you know, compliment the city staff. It seems like it's really gearing up, you know, for this change, and it's, and it's great that they're, have everything in place, and they're being very proactive. I don't know if there is, is any, any, uh, interest in maybe taking an interim, since there's some unknowns, unknown revenue, unknown costs maybe even. There's, there's some unknowns here, unknown of impact, you know, on, on businesses and on our residents. If, um, if there's any appetite for maybe doing, um, a pilot program of May 15 to September 15, um, with the expectation that we may very well, you know, increase it, uh, uh, more, you know, next year, but, but to do, to do it in those incremental steps, since here we are already in February, and I, I certainly agree with, uh, Commissioner Sharp, that May 1 is going to be here before you know it. So I would just mention that. Again, I, I can sort of go either way, but that would be one a- alternative, is to, is to do this this year, uh, as, as a sort of a test.
I'll just, just a reminder that, uh, going to September 15th is three days earlier than what it ends now, and, uh, I have a little hesitation there. Let's see, we've got, we've got, uh, Commissioner Sharp, uh, Ed, and then Jay. Commissioner Sharp?
Um, I want to lobby the other direction from Commissioner Gay, because it just doesn't feel right to me that we're doing the right thing, um, for the businesses, or the right thing for many of our residents. And I fully support making these changes, but I don't feel right that we're making them, especially, Mayor, after you said, you want to keep the momentum going with talking about parking, and really having a broader look at it. I don't understand if there is a driving need that we have to do these items. It just doesn't work for me, because I feel they're piecemeal, when you made a very pragmatic statement about keeping the pedal to the metal on other parking issues.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Legree?
Y'all are going to hate me. I move that we change the parking dates to May 1st to September 30th. If we don't like May 1st, we can dial it back, but I think eventually, we're going to, that's where we're headed, to, to one May to one to September 30.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Jay Legree, and a second by Commissioner Gay to change the parking meter and parking permit system uh, to begin May 1, uh, annually, and to end September 30th an- annually. Uh, do we have some more discussion? I know, uh, we've still got some hands up. Commissioner Srinaski?
Yeah, I, just a clarifying question for the, um, motion maker. It, would that include all days of the weekday?
Yeah, let's, uh, ju- let's get this squared away so that everybody will know. Everything going from May 1 to 30 September, every day. And as I said, we may end up dialing it back. You know, we've heard from several residents that think that the weekdays during the month of May are not very productive, and, and, and then we've heard, we've heard the whole gamut of things, but, uh, I think that's where we're headed, one May to September 30. Eventually.
Commissioner Sharp?
Mayor, could you clarify, or maybe if Carol's still on, clarify the chamber deadline for publishing information?
Uh, that would be this week.
I thought, well, that's very kind of you, because I honestly thought it was January, the end of January.
We also, we also have our own deadlines, do we not, Evan? We, we can't let this go any, any much further, because we've got to hi- hire and, uh, change signs and all that stuff, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Evan?
Correct, yes, Mayor. That's correct, Evan said.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, it, um, as much as I am for extending the season and, and hearing, uh, hearing the chamber and hearing some of the other commissioners, it sounds like we're, we're all kind of comfortable with doing this, and maybe we do need to, now, now somebody else will hate me, keep the status quo until we have a real thorough discussion and have all the numbers in front of us, and make the change that we're all comfortable with, because I, I, in hearing the discussion, everybody's brought up good points, and, um, and if we're under a deadline, I'd rather we do the right thing than to rush something through. But, um, I'll see what everyone else thinks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Legree?
The, uh, the fact that Sharon and Evan had, had geared up the, the, uh, parking folks to do this was one thing that, that prompted me to make the motion. Uh, we're all ready to go and and ready to go. Uh, I don't think we'll probably ever get the commercial folks to agree to lengthen the season, but, uh, I think it has to be done one day or another. Thank you.
Commissioner Srinaski?
Yeah, I, I just, um, I just want to say that I, I, I am a little uncomfortable, um, extending the season with it including weekdays in, in the very beginning. Um, and I, I do, you know, Carol brought up some good points, um, and while I am completely in favor in extending the season and eventually including weekdays, I don't think that we've given the employees, the business community, um, even the residents enough notice. Um, I mean, we're talking, this is two months away. Um, so I, I, I've, I've got some pause for that reason.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay?
You know, this was the very reason I suggested the interim, and I, I certainly appreciate what Commissioner Legree has said in the motion, which is why I seconded it, because yes, we can always go back, but the chamber has been supportive of May 15 to September 15, and I know you said that's three days shorter, Mayor, but it's, it's 12 days longer on the front end, so it's a net gain of nine days. Um, and, you know, they've been supportive of that from the beginning, partly because it matches what the other, uh, nearby communities have. And so there's, there's a consistency there, and, 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 you know, we just haven't gotten, nobody's saying, don't do anything at all. And I, as I said, I think the very least, we have to put some dates out there. We can't just say Memorial Day to 3rd whatever after Labor Day in September. Um, so, so that was why I was suggesting the, the May 15 to September 15 as, as a starting point. because it seems like there's just universal acceptance there.
I just want to correct you. You indicated the, the other towns have May 15 to September 15. And that is true on our chart here that we received for Dewey, Bethany B., South Bethany, Fenwick. But I gotta remember that Lewis.
I understand that.
That matches the proposal on the table, May 1 to September 30.
Actually, no, they go into October. They go to October 14.
Well, they have two different zones, areas. One, one, one does go longer, absolutely. So we haven't talked any further. If this fails, then we could certainly entertain a motion to, to look at weekends only on the same timeframe. And if the motion fails, otherwise we could additionally look at changing the dates for the start time and the end time. With that, I'm going to call the question. On the table is extending the season from May 27 to May 1 as a start date for the parking meter and, and permit system and extending the permit and parking meter system from the 18th of September to September 30. With that, I'll call, start at the top of my picture frame. Commissioner Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Legree?
Aye.
Commissioner Shonaski?
Nay.
The chair votes no. And unfortunately, with six, the motion fails. Is there another motion somebody would like to propose?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, to make the season May 15 to September 15. All day, no, not all days of the week, not just the weekends, but May 15 to September 15.
Interesting, just by, I'm sorry. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Gay and a second by Tim, Tim Bennett to extend the parking season to start May 15 and end September 15. Any discussion? I, I'd just like, I'd like everybody to take a look at the 2022 calendar. May 15 this year starts on a Sunday. And so we lose two days of revenue. I would rather have it start so that it's a full weekend if possible, rather than starting on a Sunday. And then May, May, September 15 is a Thursday rather than going through the weekend. I don't know, I just.
Well, can, can I respond to that?
Sure.
I take your point, but if we say the 13th through the 18th, first of all, those are kind of odd day. You know, tho- those are not necessarily any easier to remember than the, the current system, one. And secondly, every calendar year, those dates are going to shift. So the 15th is not always going to be on a Sunday. Just ha- this just happens to be, you know, this year. So, you know, I don't know. I, it seems like most every other community I've seen sort of has a, a set date, whether it's a mid, middle of the month date or an end of the month date. You know, you don't really see much variation in between those. So.
Commissioner Shonaski?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Gay, but for me, this is a hybrid year. This, we're only going to have these odd dates this year. My expectation is next year, we will go to May 1 to September 30. This is just a, a pilot year, as, as you said earlier. That's, that's my only counterargument, argument to that.
Well, that may prove true for me by example because we will have hopefully examined additional parking issues at that point. And this may come up again in the future. With that, is there any additional conversation? Carol Everhart, do you want another shot?
Well, I'd just like to say that that was definitely the dates that the business community was in favor of. If they're going to extend it, that was the, the dates they were in favor of. And it is consistent with the other surrounding areas.
Very good. Thank you, Carol. With that, I'm going to roll call. Oh, yes, ma'am. Is there a second to that motion? I thought, I thought it was Tim Bennett seconded.
Okay.
Yes. So, so again, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Gay and a second by Commissioner Tim Bennett to change the parking meter and permit season dates to start May 15 annually and end September 15 annually. There's no further discussion. I'll call the question. Commissioner Sharp?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Legree?
No.
Commissioner Shonaski?
Can you come back to me, Mayor?
The chair, the chair votes yes.
You left me off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, now you, now I reveal that I'm voting. Commissioner Gay?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Commissioner Shonaski?
Aye.
And the vote, the vote carries, the season will be extended to start annually May 15 and end annually September 15. Thank you very much. With that, we have the next item of business, which is to consider a vote on the parking fee amounts for metered parking spaces, amending them from a two-rate zone area, two zones currently at $3 an hour and also $2 an hour to a single rate at $3 an hour citywide. Like to open that for discussion among the commissioners? I'll start off then. I still want to, I still am looking forward to conversation closer to the fall on all the parking issues because I think this needs to, to come up and, and looked at holistically with everything else. I'm still, while I'm leaning that way, $3 an hour citywide, I still have a big pause in that you ought to pray, pay premium prices for premium spaces. And I'm still struggling with why the commercial areas wouldn't be maybe $4 an hour to, to require that or promote turnover. So I'm struggling a little bit there. I think the amount of amenities that we provide now and are going to provide into the future warrant commensurate price increases in parking for our visitor. And so that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Legree?
I think, didn't Tim, didn't we talk last time about 5.3, $5 Ocean Block, $3 everywhere else?
Yeah, but we also agreed what to bring, we would bring forward this year would be $3 an hour single zone rate citywide.
Yes, we did. And, and I would agree to, I would agree to the $3. I would agree to your $4. And I would also agree to the $5. And I, I think that this is a, this is a definite need and, and I will go forward with it. I will agree. Thank you.
And again, all, the only thing on the table is the, changing the existing $2 an hour zones to $3 an hour so that we accomplish a $3 an hour rate citywide. Commissioner Shonaski and then Commissioner Bennett?
I'm, I'm hungry and I'd like to eat before our two o'clock meeting. So I'm going to move this if you're ready.
I'll go ahead.
I move, we change the parking fee amount for metered spaces to a single rate of $3 an hour citywide.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Shonaski and a second from Commissioner Gay to change the hourly parking fee, meter fee to $3 an hour in all zones citywide. With that, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Bennett?
Yes, I, I know we had discussed previously that would this also include, I don't remember if we said five o'clock or six o'clock, all of these 30-minute spots that would, we'd be able to use those for parking in the evening?
No, this, unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't carry that forward from the last meeting. So that would end up being a future parking issue.
Okay, thank you.
So the only thing on the table today is changing the two-hour zones to three hours, $3 an hour zones citywide. Is there any additional discussion? If not, I want to go to members of the public. Jeff Bonanno is, still does not appear to be on. Walter Brittingham, any comments?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Ehrlich is still not on. Carol Everhart?
That was the least amount of response that I got. There did not seem to be a big concern in the business community to going to $3 an hour. And they like the consistency again. Visitor may be something different, but that was the response from the business community.
Very good. Thank you, Carol. And with that, I'm going to call, do a roll call vote. Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Again, this is an I vote is to change the $2 an hour fee to $3. Commissioner Legree?
Aye.
Commissioner Shonaski?
Aye.
Commissioner Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp? All right, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, aye, okay. And the chair votes aye also. That's unanimously carried over and approved. Thank you very much. With that, I know everybody wants to take a break for 45 minutes before we start our budget meeting at two o'clock. We don't need to spend too much time on this as we can do this in the future. But I want to already start thinking about identifying future parking topics for future conversation. By example, we've got Sandy, Sandy Beaver had a proposal for residential tags. If there's a commissioner that would like to sponsor that, please see me. We've talked about it at our previous meetings, permit parking time limits. We need to resume that at some point, resolve that. Earlier meetings, we've talked about permit parking fees, should they go up? And there are some other things actually that I can pull from the August parking report so that we can have a complete package. So if anybody has anything, please forward them to me. I keep an inventory of different parking issues and when to address them. And again, my desire is to address them sooner than later so that we're not into a big time crunch later. With that, is there any other comment from the commissioners? If not, I want to thank you. We'll adjourn this meeting at 1:13 PM. Thank you very much. See you in 45 minutes for the budget meeting.